Lam.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck. Trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Wajowski. Mayor Collins.
Here. Uh, rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and I have states in America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
Uh, yes, I have two. Uh, the first one is, uh, I'm sorry to say that one of our employees, Claudine Pollers', uh, husband passed, and, uh, my condolences to her and the family. But, uh, on a lighter note, uh, one of our trustees is, uh, currently celebrating his 52nd wedding anniversary, and instead of being home with his wife, he's decided to join us this evening. Mr. Rassich.
He was giving her a break.
Yeah.
(laughing).
And that's all I have. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, this is, uh, about the improvement for the 127th at Higgs. The village of Plainfield will be holding an informal meeting concerning the proposed improvements of 127th Street from Higgs to approximately one half mile west of Route 30. Findings will be presented from the Phase 1 preliminary engineering studies. All persons interested in this project are invited, excuse me, to attend this meeting. The meeting room is accessible to persons with a disability. If special accommodations are required, contact the person below, uh, and should be informed at least five days prior to the meeting. Uh, the meeting will be conducted on informal basis. A brief presentation regarding proposed improvements will begin at 7:00 PM with a question and answering. Attendees will, uh, have an opportunity to review product exhibits and meet with the representatives of the village to discuss the project. Representatives will answer individual questions offered by those in attendance. Comment sheets will be provided for those in attendance who wish to provide a written statement. The meeting will address topics such as the need for the project, proposed improvements, detour of traffic, and tentative construction date. Preliminary engineering drawings and maps will be available for inspection and viewing during the entire time. Some materials are currently available for inspection and viewing at Public Works, which is at 14-400 South Coil Plus Drive in Plainfield. The contact information will be Randall Jensen, Superintendent of Public Works, at the same address. And this meeting will be on Wednesday, the 18th of this year, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. At the Village Hall. At the Village Hall in Plainfield at the, uh, uh, here, I guess.
Here.
Yes. Okay? Uh, that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I just have one comment. Uh, Mayor Collins alluded to the fact that, uh, I'm celebrating a wedding anniversary today, 50, the 52nd wedding anniversary. I can, now, I can remember, you may not believe this, I can remember 52 years ago tonight, I was standing in a receiving line, and, uh, I never, ever thought that I'd be in, sitting at a board meeting 52 years later, but I've managed to make it. And I just want to tell anybody, all these young people out there, someday you perhaps you will marry, you may not, your parents, all I want to do is tell you that the first 50 years are the hardest. After that, it's all down. (laughing). After that, it's all downhill. And I said to my wife, I said, "Should I miss the board meeting tonight?" She said, "No, I encourage you to get away." You know, so there you go. But, uh, had a great time in 50-plus years and hope I got another 50 more. I don't think so, though. But, thanks for thinking of us. Bye.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I'd like to welcome trustee Rassich back. I do recognize you, actually, believe it or not. It hasn't been that long. My memory's still pretty good. Uh, the other comment I have, though, has to do with the, uh, meeting which is going on concurrently over at Bolingbrook Country Club. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers is doing a flood study. A flood feasibility study, and, um, something we've asked for, for quite some time, and I guess, um, government's paying for half of it, feds are paying for half of it, half of it, uh, the other quarter is Will County, and I guess the other quarter is DuPage. Uh, it's interesting to see what they come out with, but the one sentence in their little brochure, the study purpose is, uh, rather interesting. If they're truly serious about it, they may actually have some impact on flooding. Let me make sure I got the right glasses to read it. Okay. Uh, "Range of possible solutions will be evaluated, including floodwater storage," we know that, "levees," which is something they haven't ordinarily considered, "or floodwalls," "diversion channels," which is something they've generally ruled out in the past, "channel modifications," they've never wanted to consider that either, "flow control structures," "floodproofing structure," "elevations," and "buyouts." They've got some things in this study that, uh, they have really never surfaced before, and if they take a leadership role, we may actually make some improvements on the flooding. I'll have to say they understand the flooding situation. They had, uh, a lot of pictures of 96 floods in Plainfield. They had 2008 flood in Plainfield and 2013, so they know where the flooding occurs. Right now, they're getting their resident comments, uh, or comments, public comments. Uh, they will take public comments through December 4th to help guide where the study goes. So if anybody's got inputs that they want to make, suggestions to them, uh, let's get them in quickly, because potentially it could be beneficial. May as well be seen. Uh, you can study things to death and not do anything, but at least the words you hear, this is seriously considered the right thing. So hopefully it'll happen.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I think that's, uh, that's a very interesting thing, uh, trustee Lam, about that meeting, and I don't want to put the chief on the spot here, but, uh, I'm, is Plainfield at the table in this discussion, um, there? Because, obviously, we have a major role in this as well, and with the flood studies and the gauges and all that going down, I mean, because whatever they do at one end is definitely going to affect as we roll downwards, so.
Yeah, actually, um, it isn't through the chief, it's, uh, through our engineering group, uh, Mr. Persons. Uh, they also have a meeting on Wednesday night down in Shorewood, so I know that we plan on being in attendance at those, but Mr. Persons can probably give us, uh, better information.
Yeah, since the conflict with the board meeting tonight, um, we, we don't have anyone from the village of Plainfield at that meeting, but we will have, uh, individuals at the meeting on Wednesday to represent the village, to bring data back to the village board, too, as well. And then there'll be a comment period, too, as, as well as trustee Lam has had mentioned. So there'll be things to review online. We encourage public comment, especially people that have been affected by any of those events in the past, um, who would probably be the most interested, but just general public input and information would be appreciated, too. But definitely, we will have, uh, a seat at the table in this discussion.
Thank you, Alan. I, I mentioned the, the chief because of Pima and the, and the water gauges and all that other stuff they've been working on. So thank you as long as we're represented in a positive way. We're good.
Alan, you're still our representative on the, uh, Will County Stormwater Committee?
Yes, I'm the alternate. Randy Justin is actually our representative on the Will County Stormwater Committee.
So we have a seat there, which is, so we have input on a regular basis, anyway, so.
That's correct.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this will be time for public comments? There are no public comments, and we'd be seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
移到
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting and executive session held on November 2nd, bills paid and bills payable reports for September, or for November 16th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for October, and to authorize the payment of invoice 109040 in the amount of $46,850.73 to IDOT for Project C91-542-1260V33 Traffic Signal Installation at Illinois Route 26 and Meadow Lane.
移到
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is liquor licenses. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3241, amending the Class R liquor license to include the sale of packaged premium beer, increasing the Class R liquor licenses to three, and decreasing the Class L liquor licenses to zero for wine and cheese by TCC located at 24104 West Lockport Street.
移到
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none will proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3242, increasing the Class W liquor licenses to two for Evan Michael Spa located at 14200 South Route 30, Unit 108, and Divine Nail Limited located at 13530 South Route 59, Unit 104.
移到
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none will proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 tax levy. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to acknowledge the preliminary estimate of the 2015 tax levy in the amount of $5,917,100.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, 2015 tax levy.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none will proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Grace Point Church Precision Pipeline.
Yes, thank you. Um, staff is, uh, bringing a, a request by a company called Precision Pipeline for a temporary use. Uh, in accordance with the village policy, as you know, whenever an applicant requests any type of temporary outdoor use, uh, staff is historically, traditionally always brought up before the village board. Um, staff was contacted approximately two weeks ago by this applicant. Uh, they are actually here this evening, and they'd like to provide an opportunity, to have an, uh, opportunity to highlight what they're proposing. Um, but as staff's report has summarized, uh, what they are requesting, uh, they are, we will be proceeding with a major, um, upgrade of a NiCor pipeline, generally from Ogden Avenue all the way down to south of 111th Street along the current EJNE. Uh, right away, there's currently a number of, uh, gas pipelines along the EJ, or Canadian National, I'm sorry, Canadian National. Um, they are requesting, uh, to have an opportunity for a one-year period with the potential of extending, uh, up to an additional year to use the property commonly known as Grace Point, um, church property. And just for, um, just again, refresh your memory, this property is located on 127th Street, just west of 248th Street. Uh, to the north is the Canterbury Woods subdivision, to the south is the King's Crossing subdivision. The applicant is requesting to use this vacant property, which, which a number of years ago was approved for Grace Point Church. Grace Point Church does actually own the property as we speak. They're seeking to lease this property to Precision Pipeline for, again, uh, up to a one-year, potentially a two-year period for a construction yard. I've highlighted in my staff report, along with the applicant's summary of the proposed use itself. Uh, they've outlined what they're specifically proposing, uh, regards to their, uh, proposed access point. Uh, during the peak season, this, uh, proposed construction yard could entail, uh, or have up to 110 employees. Uh, the proposed operations on the six days per week would be approximately from 7:30 to 5:00 PM. Uh, staff has specifically outlined some of our concerns as it relates to this proposed, um, use in our staff report, relating from potential traffic congestion. As you know, 127th Street does see some congestion, especially in the morning, um, with regards to tr- traffic backing up, going, uh, towards the high school on 248th. We have some concerns about, um, not only congestion, we've had complaints about people in King's Crossing having difficulty actually getting out 127th Street in the morning because of traffic being backed up. That's one concern. We also have a concern about the potential impact on the residents to the north as it relates to Canterbury Woods, uh, and also the, uh, residents to the south in King's Crossing. So in our, the sum and substance, staff has outlined some of our concerns. Uh, the applicant's actually here this evening to answer any questions that the village board may have as it relates to this proposed use. Again, it, this is a temporary use. Uh, just to refresh your memory, this property is currently zoned R1, um, which is, was approved for a planned new development for a, a church. Again, that church was never constructed, and the applicant's only seeking a temporary use, uh, for this construction yard. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report. Again, the applicant's here this evening. Uh, be more than happy to, uh, answer any questions that the village board may have.
Do we hear from the applicant?
You can, you can speak at the mic right up here. Just identify yourself, sir. Thank you.
My name is Bill Eccleberry, and I work for Precision Pipeline, and I will be the superintendent on this project for this year. Our company, uh, for the past two years has had the project for NiCor Gas. Uh, they've started at the further northern end, and on the ComEd right away, there's a 36-inch pipeline that was laid back in the 70s, and we've had the contract for two years to replace the lines. And we've also got the contract for 2016. And what we was liking to do was, uh, move into the property, uh, to set up a temporary warehouse. Um, you know, I, I feel as if I've looked at quite a few different properties around the area, and I think that it'd be less impact on your guys' city with Naperville, or, uh, City of Aurora, that, you know, we would come out of that lot and immediately turn right. And that would put us within a few hundred yards of the ComEd right away. And, you know, if we get further out or east of 59, and then, you know, then we're having to drive back and forth to get to the, to the right way, is what we speak of ComEd. So, you know, I think it'd be less impact. The closer I can get to my work, the better off I think it is for us and for everybody else. Uh, we wouldn't really be traveling, uh, if we're on 127th going back to the east. Uh, we would be coming in off of 30 to access 127th to get to that lot. And I've outlined in, uh, pretty much everything that we're going to be doing, day-to-day activities, and I've also included a sketch. And, you know, I realize that people doesn't like construction, but, you know, the pipeline's been in there since the 70s, and NiCor is spending the money to upgrade the line. And if you look at the right away, uh, you know, there are several homes that are within 35, 40 feet of the ComEd right away. So, you know, it's one of those things that has to be done, and just trying to do it the easiest and simplest way.
What, what volume, um, and size of trucks are we expecting if this were to pass?
Semis and lowboys and floats.
Uh, like, what's the length and the?
Uh, the trailers are like 53, uh, 53 footers. The lengths of pipe that we'll be hauling in from Sherrville are 40 foot in di- uh, 40 foot in length and 36 inches in diameter.
Okay, so these are full-size semis operating on 127th Street there?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and they'll be hauling in, uh, you know, the pipe, and then, uh, the equipment, you know, naturally that'll be permitted. And then, all the big equipment, the majority of it, probably 90% of it, will go right to the right away. There won't be no reason to have, you know, the, the equipment that's needed to do the pipeline job is on the right away, and then the equipment that we would need at the lay-down yard is just, uh, a few pieces of equipment, you know, to unload the material and then actually load it back up when we haul it out to the job site.
Are these with, uh, maybe the attorney can help me, are these width and length requirements met by the current village code for the local ordinances? For the, the full semis? Are there any special ordinances for the widths and lengths of the semi-trucks on village streets?
I'm not aware of any.
No.
I would defer to the chief on, um, that, but I think this is.
Uh, without knowing the weight, um, they potentially could be overweight on that road. Um, I, I don't know how much those pipes weigh, but, um, they potentially could be overweight, and the width would be eight feet. So again, I, I don't, without knowing the, the, uh, the length, I think would be okay, but the width and the weight.
The width might be a problem, and the weight might be a problem.
Yes.
The only, um, street that we'd be on would just be from off of 30 onto 127th to that lot. So, you know, we wouldn't be going east on 127th. And, uh, the, all the pipes, they're all within our weight restrictions, and like I said, the, the heavy equipment, I know, is, uh, permitted, because a lot of that's over 80,000, but there, you know, there wouldn't, but other than one or two pieces of equipment at, at that lay-down yard to load and unload, and then all the rest of the heavy equipment would be taken right to the job site.
You know, if I, I could, uh, make a couple of comments, Mr. Eccleberry. Uh, I find this, you know, and this is for not only the public, but also for yourself and fellow board members. You know, I, I find this, uh, entire proposal almost, I, I don't know if I should use the word absurd, but yet that could possibly fall into the category of a description. Uh, you know, the impact on our community is so heavy, so disruptive. You know, I, I looked at the concerns that were presented by our staff to the trustees here, and they were significant. But if I want to really read some significant impacts, I would read your summary, uh, where you say you could possibly be working on Sundays, you're working, uh, you're going to use semi-trailers. It's going to be disruptive to the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And people are becoming and going, uh, I, I can't even go through the 20 or 25 different items that you had, that you put down as possible activities and approximate timeframe. If I was to say yes to this particular program, uh, proposal, I think the neighbors in this, in this area would probably lynch me and probably lynch this board. It is almost outrageous to think that we would put this heavy of an impact into a, uh, in a neighborhood area and in, and also in near a particular very active high school, Plainfield North High School. And I don't want to disrupt that place. I don't want to disrupt that northern high school. I don't want to disrupt neighbors. And so I would simply say, I would be very much against this, and when we have an opportunity to vote, I will vote no.
I'd concur with him as well, and I would use the word absurd. It's, uh, it's an R1, uh, for a reason. It's, it's residential, and I don't think that the trucks, the neighbors are complaining already about the traffic. This would just exacerbate things. I'm inclined to vote no.
I guess my only comeback on that is then, the closer to the right away, the less impact it has on the people. The further I get out, the more impacted it would be, because I'm having to travel further every day to get to the right way. And as far as my comments that I put on the paper, I tried to include everything that possibly might happen, so that way, you know, that I didn't have to worry about some, someone coming back and say, "Well, you know, you never really put that in your proposal to begin with." So I tried to cover everything to keep everybody only up and up.
Well, that you did. It's a very honest, uh, presentation of what you expect to do. Uh, from my point of view, I'd like to see the pipeline replaced, so I think it needs to happen. The question is, from where do you stage it? Uh, you're probably not aware of it, but we have a, uh, proposed garage being moved to within, you know, 100 feet or so of three houses, and we're having a, quite a bit of public, uh, comments about that. They're very much dismayed by that. Here, we're talking about two significant subdivisions, uh, you know, for a year or two, maybe temporary, but it's still going to be very disruptive for quite a while. Michael, can you put up the other picture that we got in our packet, uh, for, longer-range picture?
Sorry, I don't think I included the packet. I didn't include their exhibit. Are you talking about this one, or?
Uh, I'm talking about the one that shows on the other side of 30. It shows the pipeline. It's, uh, this one here.
Yeah, I, I did not include their.
Okay, well, let me just describe it briefly. Uh, your proposed spot is right in between two major subdivisions. On the other side of Route 30, right across from the right away that you want to put the pipeline in, is open space. What, what's in there? Anything? On this, it looks like it's just farmland. Why can that not, not be utilized? I mean, I think it's something you want to do, but that's very, well, maybe, I don't know, maybe not have seen this. I can provide it to you, but.
Uh, I haven't seen that one.
Across the street, on, across the 30, it's open farmland, or open land. And I would highly suggest that we take a look at that rather than try to put it in this particular place. Uh, it ju- it, it doesn't fit in R1. It's highly disruptive, big trucks and so on. We try to keep those off of residential streets. I live on 130, off 135th Street, and, and we get a lot of complaints about trucks going by houses. Well, uh, we don't need more of that than, uh, we need the pipeline, yes, but let's try to find another place on the other side of Route 30. Because Route 30's not that well-developed in many cases. I would think we could find a temporary spot there that might fit the community needs better.
I've been here for a month now, and I, I've been, I haven't found anything. And I've tried several, and I've talked to lots of realtors and a lot of, uh, landowners.
Well, Michael, maybe we can find a way of helping. I mean, it, it's got to be something. This is not in the community's best interest, and somehow we can, I think, suggest locations that are right along the right way, but not between two subdivisions.
We can contact the representatives of the Culver, I think you're talking about the Culver piece to the west of Route 30.
Right.
I believe that, it just came on the market, so, uh, I can work with the applicant and see if there's any interest in that piece.
Okay.
If there'll be any support for the village board on that vacant piece to the west.
Is that still at the same intersection, though, with 30 and?
It's still at.
127, right, which is a, which is a congested area that's brought up in the past.
It doesn't really, really resolve the congestion issue. It, it does mitigate some of the impact on the residents.
On 127th, it's still going to be some impact on 30, but not as much on 127th, I wouldn't think.
All right, here's a thought. Why don't we stage it down the road in Naperville and Aurora and just bring it towards us instead of us having the impact of all the trucks and all the congestion and all the staging going on? Um, I don't know if these students out here are from Plainfield North High School or where they're at. I'm seeing nodding. I can, I know the traffic issues are significant in that area. When these students are going in now, I know they've gotten tickets for staging past the left-turning lane and the whole entire thing. The street's not that wide. But if you're going to wind up going up and down Route 30, let's stage it down the road towards Naperville and Aurora, and then just bring the occasional truck back to us to do the pipelines instead of us bearing the brunt of it. That, it's just not the right position. I appreciate your, your honesty, as Bill said, true in, in your report, but everything outlined there makes our case, and it, even without that, it's just really not the right place, and I would never support this.
Can you confirm the location of the proposed pipeline replacement?
Uh, it starts, uh, north of Bogdan Avenue, um, 500, 600 feet, and goes a little bit south of 119th, uh, where Norman Town Road, where it ends, there's a little valve setting right there, where it crosses the tracks. And that's where the project ends this year, and then that'll be where it starts in 2017, and will continue south through, down through Plainfield.
And then, did you say that you were working with NiCor in the past?
Yes.
And where is your current temporary or staging area?
Uh, one that they used this year was up on Liberty Street.
And what's, what's in that, what's in that general area?
What's that?
What are the neigh- what are the neighboring uses for that location? Do you remember?
I, I didn't get you.
The neighboring uses? In other words, what's next to the property that you're using today?
Well, I'm not using it. That's the, um, the superintendent that did the work for this year.
Yes.
That's where he was at, was on, uh, Liberty Street, east of Iola.
Okay, what is it? Do you know what's there? Have you been by it?
Uh, just a few times. It's like.
I mean, are there homes next to it, or is it industrial, or is it next to the tracks, or?
Uh, be west of the tracks, probably 100 yards.
Yeah, and I, I under- certainly understand that you have a, a job to do, and you're trying to, to do that most efficiently as you can. Unfortunately, I feel very similar to, uh, some of the other board members.
Okay.
And I just think, number one, with the R1, uh, construction yard, whether it's temporary or not, I don't believe it's going to fit the, uh, the character of the neighborhood. I think you have the railroad tracks there, you have the congestion. I think the railroad tracks adds to the congestion, and then you also have the concerns of the quiet enjoyment for the residents. So I, I certainly understand your position, but, you know, one year, two years, and that could, my, my guess is that could even maybe be, become longer depending on the time, so.
No, actually, the one year would be the least that I would do with the church, and the project actually ends, uh, in September. So it's really not even a year. So, but, but, you know.
Michael, I have a question. Did, is there, did this go before the planning? Is only did they provide input at all?
No, no, you don't, no. This is, again, as a temporary use, we've only generally brought temporary uses, uh, of this, of this sort, and this is very unique. Uh, we've historically all brought to the village board for approval. It's not formal zoning, uh, approval.
Well, without a motion, I don't think we have any action.
Thank you.
Administrator's report?
None tonight.
Management services?
A question. At the coffee with the mayor, they brought up the, uh, county town. We're going to be doing something about that sometime soon?
Oh, yeah, the, the household hazardous waste collection and, um, uh, electronics waste collection, uh, at the house. It is something that staff is still exploring. Um, I know that, uh, we are putting out a survey question to our residents. We, we did a, uh, to give you an idea, just so everybody knows, there's, uh, Waste Management provides. provides a value-added service that they've, that they've extended to the village, which would allow for unlimited household hazardous waste collection at your door front, and also unlimited electronics collection at your door front. There would be a charge that would be placed against your, your monthly water bill somewhere in the range of a dollar to a dollar fifty, to be able to have this service made available. We're still working on what those terms might necessarily be. But we went to coffee with the mayor and kind of used the group that went to coffee with the mayor as kind of a focus group to see if there was genuinely some interest in going forward with this. There appeared to be some interest. So with that in mind, the mayor asked if we would put out a survey question in our weekly e-news to our e-news subscribers to see if there would be interest in having that program added. Because it is an additional cost to our residents, we did want to, and see if this was something that they would find value in doing. So that survey should be going out on one of our e-news in the, in the near future, at which point then we'll have a better sense of.
Worded, I have my own little personal focus group, I keep getting questions, what do I do now? And let me tell you, there's a lot of interest in finding a solution.
Sadly, there used to be some very good regional solutions, however, those resources are drying up, literally. Naperville had a drop-off center, which our residents could enjoy and use, however, they've reached a point where they can't finance it anymore, so that center is being shut down. Believe there's one in Wilmington, if I remember correctly, that's run by the county with, but as well, they're having some budget struggles with their facility as well. So that's why we're looking at these as possible options.
Thank you.
Management services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning department report?
No report.
Building department report?
Operations report for October, if you have any questions.
Public works report?
No report.
Oh, my God. Police chief's report?
Thank you. The item, only item I have on the agenda is seeking board's approval to sell some personal property, specifically two vehicles we have within the police department, a two thousand four Nissan Titan, that was originally a seized vehicle, and we've been using it the last several years through our DARE program, and a two thousand three Chevy Impala that has been used administratively, but we've been using it within code enforcement the last couple of years. And although the miles are a little bit less, we have been seeing an increase in maintenance issues with this vehicle because of the years of the vehicle. So I would be seeking board's approval to authorize the sale of these two vehicles as personal property.
I move that we authorize the sale of two vehicles as personal property.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two forty-three, authorizing the sale of personal property. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, and the only other item I have is the operations report for the police department for October. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Fournies report?
No report, thank you.
Reminders?
On November seventeenth, there'll be our planning commission meeting. Our workshop for the twenty-third has been canceled.